Good morning, I'd like to call this work session of the Southampton Board to order on this fifteenth day of April, two thousand and twenty-one. Please rise if you're able and join me for the pledge of allegiance. All right, pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Wendy, would you please call the roll?
Certainly Supervisor Schneiderman.
Yep.
Councilwoman Laufstad here. Councilman Martel.
Here.
Councilman Bouvier.
Here.
Councilman Skivode.
Present.
All right.
Excuse myself.
All right, go ahead and let's bring Ryan on, let's get a quick update if we can. We're still in a, under an emergency order at the state and at the local level. I, you know, Janice came to me yesterday and said, should we renew it? And I gotta renew it for another fifteen days until we get the senior centers open and everything back to, or closer to normal, and we're gonna have to keep some of the emergency provisions in place, but, so I will be in the office later today signing that two-week extension on the local emergency order. But Ryan, thank you for joining us, so can you bring us up to date on any of the COVID-related changes or issues?
Sure, thanks Supervisor. The, the, not a tremendous amount has changed since the last time that we spoke. The availability for vaccines continues to be pretty much open to, to general population now, sixteen to eighteen years of age and over. It depends on which, you know, which vaccine it is, whether or not it goes into the sixteen-year bracket, that's, I believe Pfizer only. Other than that, the other ones are eighteen and over. We, we've seen some new guidance released from the state regards to like traveling carnivals and amusement fairs. That's out now, so we, we know we have a lot of applicants that are looking at those types of things, a lot of fire departments and other, you know, civic groups that tend to engage in those types of activities. Just a real quick synopsis of the, the guidance on that because I have high interest to a lot of people. But it is a detailed document that's many pages long, so to those people that are interested in those activities, I would suggest you read the document. I would suggest you probably do it with a cup of coffee. But the, the, the quick overview is, if you are going to have that type of a thing, a carnival, you have to submit to the local health department in fourteen days beforehand, your plan. It has to involve health screenings, social distancing, and, and that is thirty-three percent of the capacity of the space or like thirty percent of the previous year's occupancy or sales on, on a given day. Health screenings, I, I think I mentioned face coverings, cleaning of, of rides and equilas, sanitizing stations, controlled movement of people on site. So those are, those are all things that have to be included in that plan. And if you're going to have any kind of a, a private gathering at a carnival site like that, where somebody say wants to book it up for the day for a, like a birthday party or a corporate event, that then falls into the nonessential gathering numbers again, which goes back to a hundred or two hundred people, or a hundred and fifty or five hundred people if vaccinated or negatively tested. So that's one of the newest guidance documents that has come out. The guidance documents have come out from the state for small and medium arts and entertainment spaces, which I know all of our local performing arts and entertainment and, and art locations are close attention to and looking at. Everybody's doing the best that they can with this because it's, it's complicated. The guidance is complicated and we would of course encourage, you know, anybody that's gonna patronize these types of things to be understanding of the fact that this is, this is guidance that's been handed down to us from the state that we have to adhere to. It's being done for, you know, safety purposes, and so just try and be understanding of the different requirements that are placed upon you. If you're gonna, you know, go to one of these locations or engage in these types of activities, it's, it's gonna be a different, you know, feel and look than normal. But we're, we're trying to, and, and the folks that are out there that are engaging in these types of things are trying to provide opportunities for people that they think they want to take advantage of, so although it might be, you know, a, a little bit different, it might be, you know, some, some rules that have to be adhered to. These are steps towards, you know, normalcy, so we hope people will appreciate that and, and then follow the rules accordingly. The vaccine site at the college continues to operate as of last Friday. We are now doing both first and second doses at the college site. So there are about five hundred and eighty-five first doses daily and five hundred and eighty-five second doses daily at the college site. There also continue to be offerings at standalone, you know, pop-up pod locations throughout the township. So I know we do have another one coming up at the, the, the Greek church. And there are second dose locations too at some of those places that previously hosted first doses. Obviously, the only folks that can take advantage of those second dose locations are the people that were there the first time. But there are still first dose locations popping up, so I would continue to pay attention to the hospital website because they're involved with a lot of these, providing the staff is a opportunity that comes up, you'll see that posted on their website. Also, continue to look at the other locations that we've put links up for on the town website, as well as, you know, the, the county, and I think we're starting to, you know, not starting to, we're continuing to hear from a lot of our residents that they're finding better access at a lot of the, the pharmacy locations, your, your CVS, Walgreens, Rite Aid, Barth's, those types of places as well. So if you're, if you're in search of a vaccine, I think that the availability has gone up significantly from earlier on in the, the pandemic, and when the vaccines started to roll out, and so you should be able to successfully find something out there. I would encourage people, we're seeing like a ten percent no-show rate at second dose locations. When you make your first dose, it's either twenty-one or twenty-eight days later that you need to get your second dose. If it's Pfizer, it's twenty-one days later, if it's Moderna, it's twenty-eight days later. You should be looking for something in your email, coming through, scheduling that second dose, or you're gonna be given the date and time right, right then and there. We need people to show up for them. It, it becomes a logistical challenge to have to try and find new locations for people to get their second doses at if they miss the second dose at the location that they're supposed to be at. So a, a ten percent no-show rate, you know, if we've got a, a thousand people or twelve hundred people that are done at the, the Greek church for first doses, as has been done in the past, and then a hundred and twenty to a hundred and fifty or so people just don't show up that next dose, you're not being fully protected and you're, you're gonna cause a little bit of a challenge to try and find you an alternate location to go to. So please try and pay attention to the timing, mark your calendar, put it into your phone, whatever it is, set a reminder, be there for the second dose barring any kind of an emergency situation that comes up, all right? There's a lot of effort that's being put into vaccinating people right now. Need the folks that are taking advantage of the vaccination opportunities to follow through and complete the series. Get yourself up to that high level of immunity, get the protection level. One dose isn't getting you there if it's a two-dose vaccine, you know, follow through and make sure you show up for that second dose as best as possible. And I would just continue to thank the hospital for their tremendous efforts on this as well. They've got their staff spread all over the place and they're doing a great job pushing this, this out and, and spinning these, these sites up on, you know, kind of moments' notice at, at different points. And the, the sites at Hampton Bay's schools went very well last week as well at, at the middle school. And certainly a credit to the efforts of Lars Clemmerson and his staff over there for all the assistance they did in creating that opportunity for people locally as well. That, that's pretty much what I have in terms of the vaccine rollout and the pandemic right now. Thankfully, the numbers are, you know, continuing to either hold or to trend downward, and the hospital numbers, more importantly, the last that we have heard, you know, are, are trending downward in terms of the number of people, you know, intubated and, and in hospitals for COVID-related illnesses right now.
All right, thank you, Ryan. Any questions? For Ryan? Yeah, it does look like finally, at least in the last couple of days, the numbers are, are starting to dip. That's, that's a good sign, but up until that, I were just really starting to see the first sign that the numbers are decreasing.
Supervisor? I, I'm, I'm happy to report to you as well because you mentioned it before and I, I almost neglected to follow up on it. That we do have intentions, as, as was expressed at a previous work session, in, in honor of Older Americans Month being in May. We have intentions and have been working quite hard with Liz Dwyer and her staff. We're preparing tentatively right now to reopen congregate dining at a, at a socially-distanced, reduced level than it was previously, beginning in, in Hampton Bays as the first site, and then we'll be expanding to our other sites. But we're looking at that for May, we're looking right now around May tenth, but the folks at Senior Services will of course be communicating with their regular, you know, patrons, take advantage of that. We know that this is something that they really want and enjoy. The socialization aspect of it is very important to, to them and, and, you know, the mental health of people during this time period too, being separated so long is not a good thing, so we're happy to report that hopefully somewhere on or about May tenth, we're looking at a reopening of that service.
Right, good, Ryan. And I know you're working on outdoor dining and that's keeping, that, I guess, starting up again as the weather gets better and better. So we're working with the restaurants on the outdoor dining permitting, correct?
Yes, that's correct. The Fire Marshal's Office continues to work with them to try and, we're, we're still in kind of an emergency mode here, obviously, so we're providing temporary emergency relief for, for outdoor dining to those locations. The indoor capacities have been, been increased to seventy-five percent, so we should see a slight throttling back of some of the outdoor capacities. Places that open outdoor in a larger fashion, have more space out there and do this on more of a permanent basis will need to, you know, work with planning and land management to get some more permanent approvals. But we are definitely working with the restaurants within the jurisdiction of, of the town of Southampton to continue to provide them with some relief because they do have, they've got better capacities indoors but still reduce capacity than what they had pre-pandemic.
All right, thank you, Ryan. All right, well, let's move on in our agenda. So the item that we actually have down first is regarding a partnership with Habitat for Humanity. And we'll bring in Michelangelo Lieberman, environmental planner, and Christine Fenton, our Director of Municipal Works.
And Supervisor, if I could just do a quick intro and then throw it to Mike, I would appreciate it.
That'll be great.
Ready? Okay, so I happened to meet a resident at the North Sea Transfer Station a couple of months ago. I don't know how he recognized me in my winter gear and my pandemic mask gear. But he asked for a few minutes of my time and we were at the bulk area and he said, take a look over there. And I forgot if it was a lamp or a chair, but he said, I could use that, it's perfect, it's in perfect condition, but I, I can't climb over the wall and get it. And you guys are paying to get rid of it. He said, isn't there something we can do? And that kind of was the genesis for, I know Mike has been very interested in the reusing because recycling isn't really working out for everybody. There's a need for it, which I know Mike will go into, and I just thought a partnership with Habitat for Humanity was a great idea. They're, they're doing some very good things, and, and I think it's a win-win-win all around. So Mike, if you can start your presentation, that would be great.
You've got it. I don't, uh, trying to get my video, perfect. Good morning Supervisor Schneiderman and members of Town Board. Julie, thank you for the introduction. So we're here today to discuss Habitat for Humanity and a partnership with town Southampton. And Julie and I and Chris Fenton and several other staff members have been working with them to kind of figure out what this could look like and how we approach it. But ultimately, the, the town has, as you're all aware, we've approached ways through two of the three options. There's reuse and reduce. Jim is really excited about bike planning right now.
Can you mute your mic?
Um, agreed. Oh, add, add, like, and even reduction where we've, you know, banned plastic bags, we banned drawers. And these are wonderful, but we haven't really focused on the third, which is reuse, right? Jim agrees. So this is that opportunity, and of course, behavior change is, and it's a, a small step into a, a larger direction. But in reference to the recommendations as sustainability plan, this is one of them. I mean, I'm just gonna quote the sustainability plan, so we're all aware. But two recommendations that really stand out with this, one is support the private sector efforts to divert waste from landfills through assistance with promotion, space, resources, for, for support include free recycling networks programs. So you get the general idea that's for somehow nonprofit thrift shop that we're, we would work with. Quote is referenced to developing an comprehensive approach for education outreach, again, all in context of waste. So what we've decided on at this point, and with the help of Chris Fenton, is that we could potentially have a truck from Habitat for Humanity at the North Sea Transfer Station. And it, it, logistically, it makes the most sense because the truck would be prior to the pay station. And one day a week, we would host between ten AM and two PM. And they'd have about three member, three of their staff members there to facilitate taking on materials. So which materials? It's, I have a list here, I'm just gonna quickly read it, cabinets, lighting, plumbing fixtures, hardware, furniture, roofing, carpet, tools, lumber, flooring, windows, a lot of building waste. Now, we don't want to really focus on the commercial side of this, we, we want this to be predominantly residents. But residents also do remodeling and have waste, so one man's waste or trash is another man's treasure. They're not going to take, you know, broken glass and a lot of appliances because the purpose is they have to resell this, and when they do resell it, it's at fifty to fifty-five percent of the retail price. And then all that profit is then put into homes that they're rebuilding. And we have about, I think, three homes that they're gonna be putting in Riverside this year, and I think another three next year.
These are affordable homes.
Correct, through Habitat for Humanity, yep. So I, I can keep going, but if anyone has any questions thus far, feel free to interrupt me. But I, I think the, the plan is that this is step one. And in the future, perhaps we'd expand to multiple days and/or a day on the weekend. We do want to reach out to more of the, more residents, you know, we want this to be a, a resident initiative as well as this is an opportunity to reduce our own waste stream, which is a cost to us. And then that money that, that, you know, they're making and they're all kind of putting back into our community. In the future, they hope to expand, where, so they'll be selling this material in Rockcockman. I know they've also introduced the idea that they'd like to expand to two or three more locations. Those locations are uncertain at this time, but, you know, if we, with a proper relationship with them, we could advocate for perhaps Hampton Bays or Riverside to really focus our attention in our own municipality.
And Habitat, well, Habitat.
I'm sorry Julie, go ahead.
So I just wanted to say about the commercial portion of it, we, you know, you, we, ours is a residential transfer station, but Habitat does do pickups, so i-if we can spread the word within our contractor community for our builders and our plumbers and remodelers, they can call up Habitat and Habitat will send a truck to the worksite or to the house and pick up that stuff. And it gets reused, so it may not be coming to our transfer station ultimately if it wasn't done this way, but it will, it's, it's being reused, which is better than getting thrown in some transfer station somewhere.
And, yeah, I just want, we've had this conversation over the last year or so, and, and Julie, thank you for, for working on this. And Michael, when we spoke with people up in Syracuse, this had been done originally a long time ago with a dedicated building, which did not, did not go well. So the concept here, just to be clear, is that this is a truck that comes in, stays for a period of time, and then drives out. So there's no dedicated structure, there's no burden on municipal waste staff to maintain things, you know, all, all of those kinds of things. I think it's a big win, and I thi-I think it's a great idea, I'd fully support this.
It also, I was gonna say, it also solves the problem that we've had in the past with these sites at our transfer stations where people sort of fight over things, you know? Where now it's, they're not actually, nobody's going to the transfer station to get anything, they're only going to deliver stuff, to drop off things. They'll be sold at a different location, so.
Yeah, one of the big problems obviously is when you start to collect things and there's no ability to monitor what's being collected. You know, it's, it puts, it's put into a, into a structure to protect it from the elements, but you, you have no real control over what's put in there. This way, we have somebody in the middle there, I can tell you, has the experience to handle this and does this quite successfully. And there's a benefit to the town, which is, you know, the icing on the cake.
So can, can I make a suggestion because Julie just had an incredible statement that she made? I've been working on our solid waste management biennial plan, as John knows, and one of our items in our implementation schedule was try to work with contractors to develop a way to bypass waste. So perhaps we work with the CRC to develop a pump card with advertising and the IT department so that we could do an email blast to those licensed contractors working within the town of Southampton saying, save money, reduce waste, donate your materials, because with the rotation of housing stock and the new construction, a lot of the interior components can be salvaged, and this might be a great way to get them with a direct relationship with Habitat for Humanity, and I think there's another organization out there who can do this. Or the hospice, West Hampton Hospice actually takes a lot of donations, furniture.
But that's, I just want to also piggyback off that, that is kind of the second component of this. Well, yes, there's a first where we're receiving material, but second, there's this PR. And Habitat is really looking forward to this partnership and would love to even advertise their, their relationship with us on their own website. So there, there's perhaps a, a little two-way of a street here, where that PR is extended both ways. Additionally, I did want to open one comment regarding a previous partnership, just so we're all on the same, you know, on the same page here. So ten, ten years ago when we had a partnership, it was actually with Habitat for, Habitat of Placonic. It wasn't Habitat for Humanity of Suffolk. It was a different organization or derivative of Habitat for Humanity perhaps, but it, it wasn't Habitat for Humanity. So this would be our first partnership with them.
No, that, that, thanks for clarifying that, Michael. I think also, I, I like that idea, we could put the link to Habitat on our website as well. So we could kind of cross-pollinate that. That's a great.
And, and Mike, just to clarify, it's really our second partnership because they are working in Southampton Town to build houses. So our first partnership at the transfer station.
That's true.
Thank you, Julie.
Sure.
Anything else on this?
Well, I guess the next steps are we would bring for resolution and have a licensing agreement and a, a hold harmless agreement that Christine Scolera put together for us. And, but moving forward, they need about three weeks' notice, so it sounds like following that resolution, we could have them operating sometime in May.
Okay.
All right.
I, I have a question for, for Mike. Would builders, when they donate materials, because I'm thinking that they'll probably have considerable amount of materials to donate, would they get some kind of tax deduction, tax write-off for doing?
It is, yes, it's tax deductible.
Is that, and that would be provided by Habitat for Humanity or the town of Southampton?
Uh, the Habitat for Humanity would be providing that. We're just allowing them to, to operate on our land.
Right.
After that, it's between them, and, and if they're, especially if they're picking up material at a site, that's not really even, that's between them and the contractor.
So it, it's an interesting point, Tommy John, you bring up, because, you know, we had spoken with the Landmarks Board and other, you know, this concept outside of, of furnishings and whatever is the limitations that are imposed by the contract with Habitat for Humanity. There's also, we have in, in construction, particularly in the rebuilding of older homes, there are landscape features and facades and sconces and all sorts of things that are hard to use, are hard and painful to throw out. And so it's sustainability, we've also talked about the ability to provide a site for that in dealing directly with construction companies that can repurpose those materials. You know, that, that's, it, it's just been conversation at this point, but I, I think that kind of concept is great, the repurposing. Certainly protect to reduce our, our waste volume, but also serve a really good purpose, so makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, a lot of times a contractor, you know, he has extra, you know, material that his job is finished and, you know, it's, it's paid for, so he just disposes of it instead of, you know, a lot of time, I know, my son spends a lot of time in East Hampton and he, the dump, and he just, and he's a carpenter out there and he, he just spent, and he gets brand-new wood at the, at the dump site in East Hampton all the time.
Yeah, facilities like that is kind of cool, you got, you know, there's piles of bricks, a little bit of tile.
Yeah.
Wood there, and everybody just comes in, it's all.
Oh, yeah.
Artists.
Pretty well-known out there, but people know, we just, they'll come and take, and it's all, a lot of it's all brand-new.
So I, I'd just like to thank everybody that worked on this, Mike Lieberman, Chris Fenton, Christine Scolera, Ed Thompson, and a shout-out to Richard Casabianca, who was that resident who just wanted a few seconds of my time and look what's happened. I think it's a, a great idea and I hope it's really successful, and I hope this is only phase one and we can go to a phase two sometime down the road.
All right, well, good work, Julie.
Thanks.
All right, so we're gonna move on to the next item, which is scheduled for ten-thirty, which is right now. So we're right on schedule here, Landmarks and Historic Districts Boards for Analysis and Feasibility Report. And we'll be joined by David Wilcox, our Director of Town Planning, and Ed Wasnovsky, the Chairman of our Landmarks and Historic District Board.
Good morning. We also have Victoria Khan on, she's a member of the Landmarks Board. And she prepared a presentation for the town to consider designation or applying for designation of the town as a certified local government through New York State SHPO with the Historic Preservation Office of the State. So I'm gonna just turn it over to either Ed or Vicky, I don't know who's gonna start off the presentation, but it's all yours, and I guess.
Maybe I can start, David.
Go ahead.
This idea for raising Southampton Town standards for historic preservation up to that of a certified local government has been in the background for quite, quite a number of years. Periodically, I receive inquiries and questioning and implicit criticism of why demolitions occur and the Landmarks Board does not have any possibility of preventing them when a historic house or structure is basically taken off the Southampton Town landscape. And this question arose again in the middle of January from a recently relocated individual from the town of Hempstead into the Bridgehampton community who inquired of me as to what are the standards for historic preservation because he, having had a summer, residents out here had watched demolitions of a large number of historic structures in Bridgehampton and wondered again why it could not be done. And then he recounted his experience in the town of Hempstead as a community with a certified local government standard that was active and successful in historic preservation, not only in his community of Wantaw in the town of Hempstead, but throughout the town of Hempstead itself. So that started the ball rolling, and I asked around a little bit, including Landmarks Board members and town of Southampton planning staff about this, and they were encouraging about it. And Vicky Khan from the village of Southampton, which is a certified local government, volunteered to undertake an explanation of the program and why it would be valuable for the town of Southampton to travel down this road. So with that, I, I thank Vicky for all the incredible work and research. So with that, uh, I I thank Vicky for all the incredible work and research she put into it. If you can explain a little bit about that perhaps, uh, and uh turn the project over to her.
Thank you. Thank you and good, good morning. Um, I hope you can all hear me. I never know whether this is working. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Yes, okay, fantastic. Thank you. Uh, good morning, Supervisor Schneiderman and members of the uh Town Board. Um, thanks for the opportunity to present uh this discussion on certified local governments to you. Uh, I think that this is, we'd like to discuss why we believe it's a really great benefit to the town in our longstanding efforts on uh preservation. So I actually have a little PowerPoint and I just need to know how to share my screen with you because I hope you've all received, uh, I did a little report that should have been distributed to you all with a lot of resources and links and a great deal of detail. So you should have that, but I'm going to go through a little PowerPoint.
All you have to do is open up, open it up on your desktop and then hit the share button.
Okay, let me see, share screen.
Open what you want to share first.
Uh, let's see here. Okay, share.
Yeah, there you go.
Can you all see it?
Yeah.
Yes.
Perfect.
Okay, so let me go from the beginning. All right, so the um, the uh, the Certified Local Government Program was actually established by the National Historic Preservation Act and the State Historic Preservation Act back in nineteen eighty. And so it allows a municipality to adopt a local ordinance that um defines their historic preservation program. And when it does so, the municipality can apply for designation as a certified local government. Uh, and this enables the municipality, if it's accepted, for technical and financial assistance in its preservation efforts. So right now, there are about seventy-four CLGs in New York State. There are towns, villages, counties, cities. Um, but actually Southampton may be older than all of these uh CLGs. The um, oops, sorry, about here. Kingston, which was the first capital of New York State, was actually settled by the Dutch in sixteen fifty-two. But as we know, Southampton was settled in sixteen forty, uh, so we predate Kingston. And uh Southampton was actually eight square miles at the time. That was purchased by four uh English settlers, settlers from the indigenous Chinacock Indians. The Chinacock at the time were hunters and fishermen and farmers. And Southampton remained that way for a very, very long time until the um, the advent of the Civil War. And particularly the introduction of the Long Island Railroad, which facilitated access to the East End and spurred the development of the resort homes, resort life, which obviously continues to this day. Um, I think, I would say that the common thread among all the CLGs is that they all have a long, vibrant history uh that they deem essential to their historic, um, to their community identity and to their character as a community. Within the town of Southampton, we have over thirty-one landmarks, uh, buildings, homes, schoolhouses, churches, historic districts. And they all speak to our community character and to the town's commitment to historic preservation. And all CLGs are active partners in the federal historic preservation uh program. So what, how, what do we do to become a CLG? And what does it do for us and for our town residents? First, we have to adopt a local ordinance. We are, because the town has made a significant commitment since nineteen eighty, in fact. I believe that uh, uh, if you go to the town code, I think it started as chapter forty of the town code, dates to nineteen eighty, uh, where we started to describe our efforts to preserve our local history and our resources. There is, in your handout packet, there is a link to a uh format for a local ordinance. We are well on our way. We don't have to um make too many changes to what we have. We would have to request participation in the CLG program from SHPO, which is the State Historic Preservation Office that's administered by the National Park Service. We would have to submit historic preservation legislation, our policies that we would use to administer this legislation and particularly to enforce it. We would have to provide information on a proposed historic preservation commission. Now, as you know, we have um our Landmarks and Historic Preserv- Historic Districts Board, which basically is, um, meets all the qualifications of a historic preservation commission. You need five, at least five members, and they have to have backgrounds in architecture, archaeology, architectural history, history, and more. We have to describe our town's local preservation program. And we have to outline the historic preservation responsibilities to be undertaken as a CLG. Now, CLG status is only granted when SHPO and the town supervisor execute a certification agreement after approval by the National Park Service. So what are the minimum goals of a CLG? One is the designation of a historic preservation commission. Do we have to rename landmarks as Historic Preservation Commission? Not necessarily. But we do have to have um a specific local ordinance that meets the requirements of a CLG and describes all of the designation procedures and the enforcement procedures. We have to have a survey of all of our assets, all of our historic uh and cultural assets, and we must inventory them. Now, as you all know, on the Town GIS, uh, we do have a survey. It was prepared by AKRF, but it needs to be updated. And we have to add potential um landmarks and items of historic um uh and cultural resources to that survey. That costs money and it costs time. But that is one of the benefits of being a CLG is that funds are available to do that survey and to complete that inventory. Public participation is another big element in CLG. It's not just educating the public. It is uh an issue of complete transparency in any process. And I know that our town is dedicated to transparency. Uh, there are hearings, there's education, there's training. And we must follow um CLG procedures, which are um fairly detailed, um, but completely described. So what are the benefits to the town and our residents of a CLG designation? One, there's funding. Every year, the state has funds available. You must apply for them, but there's funding available for the surveys, for training, for guidance. There's technical assistance that's available at no additional cost to us. There is legal advice available, because anything that the town does with respect to its historic preservation efforts must be legally defensible. Sustainability is another big goal. And I was delighted to hear um Julie and Michael talk about this program with Habitat for Humanity. Because one of the big benefits in historic preservation is that we actively require reuse of historic materials. Let's not fill up those landfills. The idea is to preserve and retain many of the beautiful structures we have. There are historic elements, windows, all kinds of of elements to a structure, including the flooring, the doors. These are part of the sustainability benefits to being a CLG. And then, of course, there are tax credits that can be significant um for qualified um properties. There are tax uh credits available of up to, I think, twenty percent uh that are, you know, help in the rehabilitation efforts and in maintenance of historic structures. There are several issues that I wanted to touch upon in terms of historic preservation. One is, uh, and I think I spoke to this already, the survey. It is um vital that we have a survey of historic properties that includes potential landmarks. As I mentioned, that survey is very outdated, needs to be updated, and there would be funds available for us to do so. Next is property values. I think many people are misinformed as to what um designation as a historic um property means to them. Does it denigrate your ability to, or impede your ability to get a mortgage, to hypothecate? No, not at all. Does it uh impede what you need to do to preserve your building or to maintain it? No. Most importantly, for the town and for property owners, is that it actually increases the property values. To a large extent, there are several studies um that I've noted in the handout that you might want to read. These have been documented, because this has been, I think, an issue that has been sadly misunderstood by many people. And it is worth looking at, uh, because property values are significantly enhanced. And the other item is design, design standards. It's very important that there are uniform design standards that the commission would create for, that are transparent. Again, it's a transparency issue, so that everybody is held to the same standards and they're clearly defined for each historic um district. Uh, if you look at Southampton Village, you mentioned that before. We do have in the village, they are a CLG, they do have design standards. Uh, firstly, all the CLGs have design standards. It facilitates a review of potentially qualifying uh elements. And it also defines what would be a design element that is acceptable for that property. We have several existing town CLGs. There's the Southampton Village, Sag Harbor Village, Village of Sagaponic, Quag Historic District. These have been long uh around for quite a, a period of time and are, um, they're very active, doing great work. We have a couple of CLGs already on the East End, the Village of East Hampton and the Village of Greenport. I've spoken with several of these uh CLGs to find out what their experience has been. Uh, and it's been very positive. Uh, everybody's asked me, everyone I spoke with said to me, well, why aren't you a CLG already? What are you waiting for? So that's why we're having this uh discussion. Now, because the town has um really made tremendous, tremendous strides in um its preservation efforts, we don't really have to make a huge number of changes to our town code to actually um meet the CLG uh requirements. Uh, here are um the major code sections that I was able to identify that would need to be um modified. The first is with respect to the historic registers criteria. We'd have to modify it because there are actually different programs and different criteria for designations versus listings. The next um section refers to the designation procedure itself. Uh, the most significant element here is that the Historic Preservation Commission is the qualified body who would be making the recommendations. The next session deals with church and school ownership options. The distinction here is that religious institutions and school districts cannot be exempt uh from designation. Uh, with respect to the hearing body, public hearings are required. Again, we touched on this earlier. Disclosure transparency is very important. There is procedure required for, um, I think, two or more public hearings to vet anything that's being proposed as a landmark. For section thirty-three, three-three-oh, three-twenty-one G, unique criteria. Um, we cannot, as a town board, adopt any criteria that is different than what is already in the preservation ordinance. That would be the local ordinance that we referred to earlier, which is the first step in becoming a CLG. And finally, uh, for um section three-thirty, three-twenty-five, the hardship application uh procedure. If there is a hardship, um, it would go back to the Historic Preservation Commission and not to the ZBA. So in closing, um, there's just a few of the thirty-one or so town landmarks we already have. I believe that all of these are a source of community pride and a very effective guide to new development and adaptive reuse. And with that, I'd like to thank you. I think that um the CLG designation would reconfirm our town's commitment to historic preservation. It gives qualified, qualified property owners the possibility of tax credits. It would provide technical assistance and grants to the town for the work that we need to do. It would guide new development and adaptive reuse. This is critical to us, because development is not stopping on the East End, nor do we want it to stop. We want growth to continue, but we also want to preserve what makes us unique. And we want to ensure that Southampton will retain its unique history, its artifacts, its structures, its landscapes and its cultural resources, because they are a continuing source of pride, image and value creation and value preservation for our community. So with that, I thank you. I'll stop sharing my screen and hand this back over um to you all, and thank you for your um.
Thank you so much, Vicky. That was a incredible presentation, very comprehensive. Thank you for the extraordinary amount of work you you've done uh to present this. I mean, my, my first question really is, why haven't we done this already? You know, it seems like it's such a logical fit for uh our area with its, you know, it really important historic resources as one of the oldest, uh, earliest settled towns, first settled town, I guess, in New York. So it seems to make just incredible amount of sense. Um, is the board inclined to move in this direction? Or do they have, anybody have any questions?
I'm absolutely in support of going in this direction. It's been talked about for a long time. And I'm really glad, Vicky, that, that, I'm glad we put you on the board.
Thank you.
You guys have come to this. Ed, you've done a really great job. And I, I think I told you once before that my liaison assignment, you guys are the one I don't worry about because you do this fantastic job, and this is evidence of it. So I absolutely support this. I think the benefits are are clearly stated, Vicky. What a, what a great presentation.
Thank you.
I do have a question. So the CLG, that would be town-wide exclusive of the villages or inclusive?
No, the, the village is its own separate CLG. This would be for the town of Southampton. We deserve to be a CLG. We have many, many, many historic res- uh, resources that we need to protect.
Thank you. It was a great presentation. Thanks.
Victoria, do you know how many towns in the state of New York are designated certified local governments?
Uh, I, I know that there are seventy-four towns and villages of all sizes. I mean, New York City, all five boroughs are certified, okay? Um, we have Kingston. We have a lot of CLGs upstate that are very, very tiny. Um, so we do have other towns. I can get, send you a list of them.
Okay, uh, but please do.
Yeah.
I, so, uh, very interesting. I certainly supported. I spent my life as a, as a social studies teacher. And, and we are certainly the oldest English settlement in, in the state of New York, colony of New York at that time. Um, by the way, in the city of Kingston, we did ratify the Constitution, so.
All right, way to go.
It was a really close vote, and the person from uh Eastern Long Island voted against the Constitution, but that's a different story. Um, I certainly uh do support this. I have a question about the design standards. Would these be design standards uh that go throughout the entire? Would these be design standards that go throughout the entire incorporation of South, unincorporated Southampton Town?
I'm sorry?
Would these, would these be building design standards?
These are building design standards that would be unique to each district. Because each district has its own character, but you can't, so they're not arbitrary. And you might take a look at, if you look at the Southampton Village website, for example, or Sag Harbor, they have design criteria. And that facilitates both a review by the commission and also it helps the design team that's working on any modifications or enhancements to a property to understand what they need to do to be compliant and be consistent in architectural treatment.
Okay, and this would be specific to historic properties?
Yes, yes.
I, I like it. I, I think we definitely should move forward on this and, and, you know, flush out all the questions. Yes, Ed?
Variability of design standards. When the two thousand fourteen AKRF survey was done, it identified three residential historical district centers as possible historic districts. But they also identified an industrial historic district in Brinkhampton composed of the old potato storage and processing facilities close to the railroad track that was used for transport of agricultural produce. And so obviously, there would be different standards that would apply to a district like that compared to a residential district.
So I, I'm sorry, I, I had one question about CPF properties that we have a lot, we have historic buildings on CPF properties. Is there any limitation because of the condition of purchase or the stripping of development rights or how those particular properties under that statute? Are we still, are all those properties contained in this CLG?
My understanding is that they would be supervised under the jurisdiction of the Landmarks Commission for whatever changes might occur with them.
Okay, that was my understanding too, but I, I couldn't find any information about, about that. I don't think there'd have been an opinion offered, so. Thank you, Ed.
Vicki, you, you mentioned possibly the Landmarks Committee becoming the commission. Is there anything in the regs that limit the amount of people who may serve on such a commission?
No, there's no limitation. There is a requirement that there must be at least five members. That's, that's a minimum requirement of five members for the Historic Preservation Commission. There's no limitation on the the total number, but you must have at least five.
And do we have anybody currently on landmarks who represents our indigenous population?
No.
That might be something that if, you know, if and when we go this route of a CLG, it probably would be good to have a representative from the Shinnecott Nation. On the.
Agreed.
So, a- anybody else want to weigh in from the board?
I just wanted to ask, I'm definitely in favor of this. I just, do we already have a database of historic houses and landmarks that we're going to be going by? Or are we going to be surveying the whole town again?
We do have an existing database that dates from two thousand fourteen survey with an added criteria of a date that goes back seventy-five years. And that provides the trigger for review under the current Landmarks Board practices.
Good, thank you.
So what's proposed, Rick, is that we update that?
Right.
You know, AKRF, I guess, did the original inventory, but they did it, I don't know, six, seven, eight years ago, seven years ago?
It's, yeah, and started about eight years ago. And of course, one of the unfortunate aspects of having to update it is that we know that about five or six percent of those buildings have since disappeared.
I, I don't think we need to update it to apply for the CLG. It is something we want to do periodically is to keep that inventory updated. As, as Ed pointed out, there are structures that have been demolished in the last seven years that we would want to acknowledge in the inventory that they no longer exist. But I think we have significant database already to apply for the CLG and, and then to apply for funding to keep it updated. I wouldn't want to hold up CLG designation with an update to the, to the existing inventory, though.
So Dave, if we, if we become a CLG and we receive opportunity for funding, some of that funding could go to do that very update, correct?
Yes.
All right, anyone else? Did everybody weigh in?
I, I have one more question. So I, I saw in your presentation, there was a hardship exemption. So if there's certain standards that you have to maintain to be in this program, but you can't afford to do it, you can apply for a hardship and be released from something that you can't afford to do?
Right, there, there would be a hearing on that. And the step, step one hearing would be with the Landmarks Board. If the Landmarks Board judgment is disagreed with, it then can be appealed to the Zoning Board of Appeals as the second body, and then go on up the advocacy chain.
Okay, thanks.
Julie, our, our current code already has provisions for applying for hardship if you are in a district or designated landmark. So, you know, we have, we have that component already in our code.
Okay.
And, and people have availed themselves of it quite, quite, I won't say quite a lot, but have availed themselves of that successfully.
I, I do like the idea of going to the CLG for the review rather than in the zoning board, only in that the expertise in terms of historic buildings is, is specific to the CLG where the zoning board may have some expertise, but it's not, you know, it's not their main expertise. So what I. Go ahead, Tony.
Supervisor, ultimately, a, a person could go to the zoning board, according to what Mr. Wostowski just said, for a variance on, on this. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So, and that's all public and the neighbors would be notified, so.
So an appeal from the determination of the commission would go to the zoning board.
Right, okay.
All right, so what I'd like to do, Jim, can you prepare the resolution? It's pretty well laid out in terms of all the things that it needs to contain. I'd like to be the lead sponsor on it. But if anyone else wants to co-sponsor, I appreciate, it sounds like it has great board support, so. John, do you also want to co-sponsor?
Yeah, absolutely. I think Tommy, John, and I were both liaisons to the, to the board. I'm, I'm, I won't speak for Tommy John, but I certainly would like to co-sponsor.
And Julie, do you want to add your name too? All right, so, and I saw Rick's hand go up, so. The, the board, the board, it's got a pretty good chance of passing with all five board members sponsoring it, so that's, that's good. Though, well, you know, we'll have a public hearing on it. And, and then we'll make a decision. And then if we pass it, there's still some procedural steps that will author, you know, I'll be authorized then to enter into that agreement. Where I guess with SHPO, is that, or with State?
With SHPO.
With SHPO, SHPO. Okay, Jim, you, 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 I guess, can confer with Vicki as much as you need in terms of putting this together, but it sounds like a lot of other areas have passed similar legislation, so.
Sure, we can take a look at that. I can work also with Dave. Appreciate the presentation, Victoria. It's very informative.
Yeah, really.
Thank you all for your support.
You do. You guys are, like I said, you're my, well, I won't say you're my favorite, favorite board.
But again, no, this was really just terrific presentation. And the, the document that you gave us was very well structured and put together. And it was a volunteer effort, which is really remarkable too, that, you know, that you guys did this on your own. So, thank you so much. We're really, we're both pleased to have both of you on this landmarks board, and thank you so much for your, for your efforts. Okay, we're going to, I, you know, I should point out, although she didn't say anything, but Julie Green has been with us through this presentation too. She's our town historian. And I'll mention too, though she's not on the line, we do have a town archaeologist as well. Joanne McLean, who's been designated that, so would be good for her to be able to have some sort of relationship with the CLG when it's created, as well as our town historian. All right, so we're going to move on in the agenda. The, the next item we have is an update on residential environmental investigation of the Suffolk County Army Airfield bombing and gunnery range in West Hampton. It says Suffolk County because now it's owned by the Suffolk County. It was federally owned, obviously. And this, this is sort of the, the Beaumont facility, I believe, which is like a sixty-acre site and the surrounding area off Old Country Road in the West Hampton area. So Dave Wilcox, our planning director, will, will present as well as representatives from the US Army Corps of Engineers. So Dave, I will, you know, we'll get some people on. Charlie, you'll let everybody in. And Dave, do you want to kick this off?
Sure. We have Julie Rupp from the Army Corps of Engineers. I think she'll be the lead presenter. And they've prepared a PowerPoint presentation that they want to present. This is something that the Army Corps came to us with about a year ago during the lockdowns, during the pandemic. We had numerous Zoom conference calls with Army Corps and town representatives, and they laid out their plan for how they are going to perform this investigation of the former bombing and gunnery range in the West Hampton area to the west of the airport. So, as I said, they prepared a PowerPoint, and I'll just turn it over to Julie.
Dave, just before you get started, is that the gunnery range, because I'm not used to that language, is that the same as the Beaumont facility or is it a different piece of property?
The Beaumont missile site is actually, I believe, outside of the study area. The gunnery and bomber, bombing range was the area of the Pine Barrens on the north and south side of Sunrise Highway that was used for bombing and target practicing.
So the, it'll be laid out, Mr. Supervisor, in the bound, in this presentation, the exact boundaries of the study area.
Correct.
Okay. So we'll, we'll turn it over, I guess, to Julie.
Yep. Good morning, everyone. My name is Julie Rupp. I'm with the Army Corps of Engineers, New England District. I also have with me Todd Beckwith, who heard, so we, a little background, we are unable to use Zoom on our government computers. And so connecting can be a little tricky, and so unfortunately, Todd was unable to connect to the video, but he is on via phone and will be participating. So Todd Beckwith is with our Baltimore District. He's the technical lead for this project. And he's our munitions expert as well. And so that's, Baltimore District takes the lead on that. And then in addition, we have our project manager from Tetra Tech, who is our contractor to help us conduct this investigation. And David Wilcox is correct that this is not the Bowman Missile Site. This is a historical practice area for bombing and missile gunnery during like the World War II timeframe in the nineteen forties. So that's what we're looking at. And so the slide, and so consistent with the connection, my contractor will be advancing the slides for me, so you hear me asking for next slide. Great, so, thank you for having us. We really appreciate the opportunity to talk to you about this project. As David had indicated, we've been talking to folks in the planning phases for a while. We secured our contract at the end of last summer. You know, have been kind of picking our way through the process during COVID as best we can. You know, and we're going to go through what the project is. We'll introduce the program that it's under that you may not be familiar with, the site itself, an overview of the remedial investigation, what this means for you as a town, because of course, it's the, the area we're investigating is over four thousand acres, you know, within, within the town. And then we'll go over the project schedule, and then there's, we always like the opportunity to go through our safety reminders, which are the three Rs for munitions avoidance, so we'll, we'll give that a plug at the end and have questions at the end. That being said, I think sometimes it's useful, you know, if folks have questions while we're on a slide, you know, certainly, certainly speak up and we can, you know, we can have that conversation. Next slide, thank you. Do we do the acronym slide, Jen? So the, I'm going to try really hard not to use unnecessary acronyms. You know, as, as I think most are aware, the Military Department of Defense uses a ton of acronyms. David, I plan to add FYSA to our acronym list for you. An email is just for your situational awareness, and it was jargon that I wasn't really aware of, wasn't widely used, so. So there are a lot of acronyms, and I will do my best to make the language clear that we're using. That being said, if you have a question about it, you know, chime in and ask, because there are a lot of them.
Miss Rupp, I, I do have a question about one of them, munition, munitions constituents. All of them, I can understand that one. I just, like a little explanation.
So munitions constituents are the chemicals that we would be investigating related to the munitions. So in this instance, it, it would be metals and explosives. Those are the two very constituents we're looking at. But yeah, that's, that's what that means. Okay, so this is an overview of the project team. I'm Julie Rupp, Todd Beckwith, our technical team lead is also on the phone. We have a, a pretty diverse team covering many areas of, you know, such as ordinance and explosive safety risk assessment, which includes both human health and ecological risk. We have been in communication with the Pine Barrens and are in continuous communication and are, are very aware of the conservation concerns at this site. We also have our biologists in cultural resources, as well as the geophysicists, who will be conducting a large portion of the work. So basically, it's a full suite of technical experts on our team at the core, which are mirrored. Our contractor, only the project manager, Jen Harland, who's on the, on the call here, is listed, but her team mirrors our team very closely, and so we have a, a very large team of people on this project to do the investigation. So we are conducting this under the Formerly Used Defense Sites Program. And so formerly used defense sites are sites that were used by the military in the past and were transferred from DOD control prior to nineteen eighty-six, October of nineteen eighty-six. And that means, you know, the site was sold to others for whatever reason. In this case, there are many property owners involved in this particular FUDS, and so we call them a FUDS. And so you'll hear that term, FUDS, and, you know, so FUDS is the site itself. The goal of the FUDS program is to reduce in a timely and cost-effective manner the risk to human health and, and the environment from past DOD activities. You know, so basically, this is the DOD, DOD rather, addressing our prior environmental liabilities, you know, due to use at various sites. We follow the circle up process. We follow the CIRCLA process. That's the Superfund Law is CIRCLA. And so CIRCLA is a prescriptive process with which to investigate and remediate contaminated sites. Here's a process overview for the FUDS. We are in that orange block, the investigation stage. In 2009, we had the Army Corps, not me personally, but the Corps had done what's called a site inspection, and that was to gather preliminary information to inform the risk for the site, you know, to prioritize it on the list for when it comes up for investigation and funding. And then it has some preliminary information about, you know, what has been found. And so there were some limited groundwater samples collected and limited soil samples collected. You know, and from there, it was determined that a full remedial investigation was necessary. And so that's the process we are beginning to embark on now. The goals, again, more specifically are to gather information to determine whether the DOD impacts to the property occurred and or remain. More specifically for this project, it's going to be, you know, we want to define the nature and extent of munitions and explosives of concern. And then those munitions constituents, which would be, you know, it would be more like you take a sample of soil and send it to a laboratory to see what might be absorbed to the soil that you wouldn't necessarily see. Rather than debris, which we will also look for. One of the objectives is also to verify that our boundary is correct. We have a lot of historical information with which to pull that formed our boundary, but that is also one of the things that we'll look at. And then once we have the information, we will go through the human health and ecological risk assessments and do various assessments about health and safety and the environment. Here is a map of the area. And so the the boundary of the bombing and gunnery range, which is the MRS, is in red. And then the boundary of the FUDS is in yellow. And so we are seeking to better define the boundary of that MRS. But this in general is the area. We have more maps throughout the presentation to show specific areas where we wish to investigate. As well as more specific information about targets that we'll see. All right. So this is some basic site information. As I went through before, the site was used historically during the World War II timeframe for bombing, strafing, and rocket fire training. A lot of what was used was inert. However, some of what was used was not inert. And so they did use, you know, as you can see here, you know, high explosive bombs, incendiary bombs, and rockets. And they used to have target silhouettes. Two of those still remain at the site, and we'll see the location of those in the map. After after the training was complete, they did do a surface clearance back in 1946. But the surface clearance was done to the standards of the time. And so it's been determined that additional investigation is necessary to make sure munitions debris and munitions constituents don't remain in the environment. Here's another, this is the historical 1947 aerial photograph. And the polygons and lines that you see, they, I'm actually having a hard time seeing this. They basically denote different features at the site, such as the limits of bombing, different ranges, purple. There's some access roads in purple, you know, towers, ground scars. You know, so you look at where, you know, where does the ground not have vegetation? And that might indicate disturbance from bombing. And so this this was one of the, you know, some of the historical information that we used to form the objectives of the current remedial investigation. So we looked at historical areas that we know were used, historical disturbances to the ground, and came up with our plan.
This is Councilwoman Lasted. I'm sorry, just two slides ago, and you don't have to go back, but what is a silhouette of an aircraft carrier? What is that made up of?
Hi, this is Jennifer Harland. It was actually made up of rocks. So they have kind of, those two that are left were rock silhouettes and targets and made to look like an aircraft carrier from above.
Got it. Okay, thank you. I was curious. Thank you.
Thanks, Jen. So here's another map. The blue circles are the various targets that used to exist. And there are different polygons for the ranges. You know, so there are ranges and targets. And so we compiled all of this information about the historical target locations, as well as the areas of the ranges themselves to plan where we need to investigate. So the technical approach. So site preparation. I'll get into the geophysics and the methods in the next couple of slides, but part of the approach to investigate munitions is to conduct geophysical surveys in lines. And in order to do that, the geophysical equipment, I'm not sure if you've seen some of it, but they they tend to have a low ground clearance because they're trying to look, you know, through into the subsurface. And so vegetation reduction is is something that will need to be done in order to run the geophysics over the ground where we need to you know, also have logistical items like storage containers and portable toilets. And, you know, due to COVID, we haven't been able to do a site walk. To look at the area to determine what areas might make sense for these items. We are planning to do so, I think, within the next month or so, in mid-May, we're targeting. There are quite a few residential parcels where, you know, that overlap for the investigation. And so currently, vegetation reduction is not planned in the residential parcels. We would plan to run geophysics over manicured lawn areas. We have had multiple conversations now with the Pine Barrens regarding the vegetation reduction. You know, from a conservation standpoint, as well as from a wildfire standpoint. And so we're aware of wildfire concerns in the area. And have been working closely with them to get their support for the project. We won't remove trees greater than four inches in diameter. And based on our conversations with them, we would leave any chipped brush in place so that a seed bed exists with which to regenerate herbaceous and shrubby vegetation.
And Julie, a quick question for clarification. The, you're doing a non-invasive subsoil study, or you're using ground penetrating radar or acoustics, or what's the methodology that you're using to do that?
Right. So we'll use electromagnetic surveys as well as ground penetrating radar. We're actually going to get into some of the more into the technical instruments that are going to be used in the next couple of slides. And I may chime in on describing some of that. And there's also a picture. So we will get into what we're going to use. But in general, there's three phases to this work, which we'll get into. The first phase is to do transects or lines 500 feet apart throughout the entire MRS or throughout the entire polygon where we're going to investigate. And based on that, you know, here's the technical approach summary. Okay, great. So in general, phase one is doing the vegetation reduction and geophysics over lines across the MRS 500 feet apart to determine where we have high instances of anomalies. And that just means where there's lots of metals detected in the ground. Step two will be to focus on the areas that we detected high concentrations of anomalies and do more focused grids to try to determine what might be under the ground. And then phase three would be some digging. If we determine that there are areas that need to be dug and munitions brought out of the ground. And Jen, do you want to go over some of your instrumentation? I think that would be helpful for you to do that.
Sure. So yeah, so the equipment that we're using is electric magnetic. There's coils involved and they sit kind of on a cart like this. This is actually our, a different, the second phase equipment, which is called a metal mapper. But the similar for the EM61, so it'll be on wheels. You run it over and it, sorry, it, you know, sends some pulses down through there, records a response, which is anomaly, as we say, and then we process all this data through GeoSoft software and move on. The second phase, which is going to be done with this piece of equipment, which is called a metal mapper two by two, is actually relatively newer technology that the Corps has supported development of. And this is the same thing where we will walk this over. These smaller grid areas will map 100% of it, get responses. But then this piece of equipment here, you can actually set it on top of a target or anomaly response where you think there might be something. It'll map things. And again, it's very technical and I don't even understand all of what goes on behind the scenes since I'm not a geophysicist. So I try to summarize for my non-technical folks. But we'll actually be able to get a response from this that matches a DOD, Department of Defense library item that might be able to say that target right there is a horseshoe. Or that target is the 4.5 inch bomb projectile, something like that. And so that's this newer kind of equipment that's been developed to, so that we don't have to dig everything up. We have a much better idea of what's out there, whether it's cultural debris, whether it's munitions debris, whether it's actual munitions and explosives of control, of concern.
Thanks, Jen. Todd, did you want to add anything? Or did she cover it?
No, I think she covered it well. Yeah.
Great. Thanks.
I did have a question about the this is Councilman Scavoni. This area, this particular area is unique. This is the area of the Pine Barrens where it's predominantly dwarf pines. And a lot of the trees just don't grow very high and they have unique cones where the seeds are distributed. And I just want to underscore that you had these conversations with the Pine Baron Society and you fully know the vegetation in this particular area and that it's not going to change with a different type of vegetation that's going to come in.
Right, yes. So we have been having these conversations with Pine Barrens. They've seen our transect map. We have completed our fish and wildlife consultation with respect to threatened and endangered species. We are now working through the rest of it with New York, the state of New York, which often is not done on a federal project, but recognizing that, you know, this is a special conservation area. We are also working with the New York Natural Heritage. And then as well as the Pine Barrens, we went through their permitting process to get the designation that, you know, we're not conducting development so that the project may move forward. But we will continue to work closely with them. I guess on a side note, I'm a member of my Conservation Commission in Massachusetts and deal with, I'm a steward of open space. And also work with developers to minimize their impacts on wetlands as well as T and E species. So I'm just, you know, I guess on a hobby volunteer standpoint, this is also something I do for my town. And so I'm on Zoom, you know, like you guys, quite, you know, several times a month. You know, so we very much take it seriously that this is a very unique area. And there really isn't anything like it outside Long Island. You know, so we are taking that very seriously and working closely with the Pine Barrens to ensure we minimize impacts you know, to the T and E species.
That's good. Right, because the Pine Barrens are, and this one is a particular subset of the Pine Barrens. And I just want to make sure that the vegetation that does come back through your seeding process, the cones actually seed through fire, you probably are aware of that, and that the trees that come back are trees that match the particular area.
Just one clarification. So Councilman Scavoni, so they're working with the Pine Barrens Commission. The Pine Baron Society is a different group, a not-for-profit advocacy organization? I don't know what degree they're working with the Pine Baron Society, but I think what what Julie is saying is they're working directly with the Pine Barrens Commission. So when they say Pine Barrens, I think they're referring to the commission, the state commission.
Right, we are referring to the commission and not the nonprofit community group. I wasn't aware of that group. Should we also be reaching out? I would imagine Pine Barrens Commission would let us know if we also need to be reaching out, but
They're very active with the commission, so closely the work of the commission, so I'm sure that they're aware of this.
Right. Okay. I would imagine so. We've been speaking with the Pine Barrens since last spring.
Yeah, it's my understanding, Julie, that they are quite involved and being kept up to speed with the commission.
Okay, good. And I'm sure the Pine Barrens Commission would would have the trees go back the same way. In other words, these are species of pines. Okay.
Yep, absolutely.
And just this is Councilwoman Lasted, just to Councilman Scavoni's question. So this area, it says on this slide here, it's 28 acres. And on a previous slide, it said that anything over four inches in diameter would not be cleared. Does that mean that everything less than four inches will be cleared and chipped?
Yes, within a transect, yes.
How much clearing is that total, do you think? Or is it everything, just leaving out four inches and above?
No, we're not going to clear cut the entire area. We are going to do vegetation reduction in the transect area only, but it would be everything less than four inches. So it would be any herbaceous or vegetation less than four inches.
And how big is a transect area? My apologies if I'm not getting it all quickly here.
I think the 50 feet, the first ones are 50 feet wide.
The, yeah. The transects are probably three or four feet wide, again, just to get this piece of equipment through. And then, as we said, we're going to, to get the 500 foot spacing, which is selected to ensure that we kind of find the smallest munition that had been used out there, so that you actually get these areas. We are looking at, you know, this 374 linear, 1,000 linear feet of transects. This is probably a better figure of it, kind of all of those oranges, yellow lines are our transects that we would then be cutting along those, again, four to five feet wide, just so that the equipment can go through and we can map all those areas.
And those transects are spaced 500 feet apart. And so the 28 acres is out of the, you know, over 4,000 acres of the munition response site. So that it's 28 acres out of over 4,000 acres would need to be cleared for this transect survey.
Thank you for that clarification.
Okay.
All right. So I think we can move on. Right. So phase three is the digging phase. And so after we do the 500 foot transects, then we'll focus down and do the grids that Jen had talked about using the more specialized equipment to determine what is under the ground. And then if we need to dig, we will do so. And then Jen, do you mind elaborating on the, the digging phase?
Sure. So what will happen is that from the first two phases of data, we'll end up with kind of a rank sheet that says these items really look like munitions. These items might be munitions and these items definitely aren't. And so we'll dig all of the munitions, like a subset of that, and it will be determined with the Army Corps and we'll go to group. And then the folks that come out are unexploited ordinance technicians. Most of them are retired Army, Navy or Air Force, and they've been trained, you know, for explosives. And so they'll have hand tools, shovels and such. They'll locate that target for the pin flag there, and then they'll dig around it using all of the required safety requirements to determine what it is. And then, you know, at that point, there's exclusion zones that are put around to make sure that, you know, no one that doesn't have that training is there and then we're being safe. So there may be some evacuations that are needed. But then once we get that, they'll identify what that item is. If it is something that is ammunitions and explosives of concern, it gets guarded and we call in on-call explosives. We have a vendor set up and they'll bring us explosives to the site, which we will detonate in accordance with all of our safety requirements. And if it's not something that's an explosive of concern, it just becomes munitions debris and it's determined safe and it gets recycled and for the metal later on.
Thanks, Jen. And then so in, in addition to the digging for phase three, we would also be collecting soils and groundwater for analysis of munitions constituents. I want to mention, these sites in general don't tend to have a major impact on groundwater. So we do not anticipate, you know, groundwater contamination impacts based on, based on what we've seen. But we are, it is included in the investigation and we, we will look into it.
If you do a detonation, do you inform the municipality and/or the public?
At least upon.
Yes, we will. There's a community relations plan and there's plans in place and that's part of this coordination that we'll do. But we will certainly, if somebody's right near there, they get informed and then we'll inform the local fire departments and, and police and all, so they know what's going on.
Okay, thank you.
Could we have evaculations on the next slide maybe too? Yeah, so that was. So, right. So evaculations would certainly be coordinated, you know, through the proper channels. You know, we will have the appropriate experts on site if, if a live munition is found. You know, but part of the community relations plan is to determine, you know, again, communication with the fire department, communication with the police department, you know, DPW. Who, you know, who else needs to know? We know Sunrise Highway goes through there, so DOT. So these are all, we're all still in the planning phases and information gathering for some of these. But very much so will, will involve, you know, the, the town would be made aware.
Did the, Jim Burke, the town attorney, did the wildfires have any impact on this? Back in the 94, 95, I mean, this area got almost completely cleared from the, from those wildfires. I was just curious if there was any, anything said, if there's anything about that, if you're familiar with that at all.
Go ahead, Jen.
I was gonna say, we haven't heard and seen anything in the historical records, like if there was a surface item or something through that wildfire that may have detonated. Again, we're looking at surface and subsurface. So while, you know, there may have been all the surface taken care of. If there's something underneath that surface, then certainly that wouldn't have been impacted at that time by the wildfire. But we are aware of that in talking to the Pine Barrens Commission and talking to the fire management specialists of the fires that have gone through there. And then that you're kind of, I think, due for one, as you said on the last call.
We're aware that the, the cycle is, is a little overdue based on what you typically see. That's what we were told.
Yeah, that was, this was, that was tremendous fire. I mean, really from south of the college where you saw it from the picture, all the way, and it jumped sunrise and and ended up, you know, west of the actual airport. It was, it was really something else, but.
Yeah, that sounds huge.
Yeah, it was. It was.
And then we, we also will have, we've incorporated, you know, health and safety type procedures to make sure we don't start one, you know, as far as, you know, using, using equipment safely. You know, a lot of, a lot of the equipment doesn't, you know, won't have a spark. But we are, we are very much aware of the, the fire danger and are incorporating that into our plans with respect to health and safety and field procedures. Let's see. As much as possible, we will try to avoid digging in highly impactful areas, you know, such as Sunrise Highway, you know, or, or people's yards. If we are able to determine what might be under the surface with our equipment and avoid digging like in someone's yard, for example, we will do our best to try to avoid it. You know, however, we are also trying to make sure we take care of anything that we need to take care of. So, you know, that will need to be balanced. But in general, you know, we will do the best we can to minimize our impacts on, on, you know, town and road operations and, and people's residential properties. We already have a window that we can't work due to the northern longyear bat nesting, and that's June 1st to July 31st. This also mimics tourist season, which we also plan, plan to avoid. So that's, that's our general approach from a town standpoint. Rights of entry. And so as we talked about in the beginning, DOD doesn't own this, any of these properties. So we are, are going to be working with property owners, some of which the town owns several properties, the county owns some as well, as well as coordinating with the pine barrens because we know they have the conservation easements. So we're, we're working with them as well to, you know, determine what that means for rights of entry. And I think we have a, you know, so our work's going to depend on who gives us access. And so I think we have a, so this map depicts the town-owned parcels within the, within the investigation area. And you can see the, the targets for reference. And so these would be parcels that we would want to work with the town on to gain access for investigation.
So as I, this is John Booby again, just for clarification or to put it in context. I think the last call that we had, you had said that there was roughly, and Dave, correct me if I'm wrong, 30 to 40 private properties in the search area. Is, is that still correct?
I think the number is larger than that. I think 100 or more.
Okay, so it's, it's, it's widened then. All right. So we have.
For the residents.
Yeah. So we have to work on, on that access and helping you guys to gain access to those properties.
So support, certainly support from the town for this investigation in general. You know, it is helpful, but the, the right of entry process for the homeowners, that's something that we need to work directly with them for. That being said, that one of the next things we want to do is to have a public meeting that folks can attend and ask their questions, you know, such as, are you going to remove my azaleas? Or, you know, various things that, that folks might be, you know, and are there bombs in my backyard? You know, people are going to want, you know, want to ask. And so that's, that's really the, the next step that we're driving towards. And so, you know, it, having, having the support of the town in general for this investigation would be, would be very helpful. And, you know, and I recognize, you know, you have already been supportive in, in posting the information on your website, which we very much appreciate. And Ross and David and Paula have been very responsive and helpful in connecting us with, you know, the people who need to hear about this project. And we believe it's really important and, and, you know, are, are open to, you know, any, any questions that anybody has and, and really to, to make sure the public is aware of what's going on. So they don't just see a crew, you know, across the street and wonder what the heck's going on. We, we really want to try to make sure that everybody is aware. You know, and so our real estate office is starting to make some phone calls. I have a letter, an informational letter that I'm planning to send out this week that really just has the information that's kind of in our fact sheet anyways, but really to direct it to the homeowners. And, and then also we would like to have a public meeting so that homeowners can, you know, and property owners, really, they're commercial property owners as well. You know, can, can have a, a forum to get their questions answered and, and hear more about the project.
Yeah, we, we've given you some, some organizations, you know, for, 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 trying to reach the public. And we have our local CAC as well as where. So we're, I think we're good as far as the local residents. I just a little surprised that the number had jumped or maybe I just misunderstood the, the last meeting. So I, Dave, I'm sure you have that list. I think it might be worth going over that so I can match that up with membership and also people involved with the CAC. There's some small local groups too that, that may be helpful in that, but we, we can discuss that at the next call.
Looking at the map, if you, within that red boundary line, the only real residential area is the area right just west of the airport, right? It's there.
Yeah, it's, it's not that much. The other prop, there are other, you know, these other properties, I, I just don't know. I can't, you know, answer the questions. I just.
Yeah, there's actually, there's a property that's owned by the federal government in there, right? There's all that base housing, you know, we've.
Yeah, Coast Guard owned.
Right, right. And we've been, the town through our community development agency, we, Diana Weir and Kara Back from my office have been talking about acquiring the, those properties for affordable housing.
Oh, sure.
And then is, and then is the neighborhood right across the street, which is, right, you say.
Yeah.
I think that's only residential, I can see, maybe a little bit.
Yeah, so there's residential areas, but then there's also kind of within these. You don't have a parcel map. All of those individual properties that are owned that were turned over to the Pine Barrens Commission for easement, they still have individual property ownership.
Yeah, individual property owners, but the, the most of them in it is, that's most of the core area, pretty much.
Right.
Yeah. And then you have the sandmine operations office, Bianca River, like, you know, right where the floor planes, basically that.
Right.
Yeah, in between, they got a couple of active sandmine operations and asphalt plants. And that's a very heavy industrial area right there.
Yeah.
The map is pretty much core area from there.
Yeah. No, go ahead.
Uh, as part of that residential area, there's also a very popular park. Where a lot of our children go and play baseball there.
Yeah, it's a nice field.
Is that going to affect that park or those activities in any way? Or most importantly, the children at the park?
Right. So I don't, I don't know exactly where the park is in reference to the. Okay.
It's just west of the, of the end road that goes down to, to that park. So when you go down there, Julie, it's all the way at the end. You just go straight through past, right there.
Okay.
And we might, we might do a, a site survey with you and walk some properties when you guys are free.
Sure.
Okay.
Good. Thank you.
Julie. Supervisor, turn it here. So you mentioned earlier, like the site was sort of used in the early to mid 1940s. And then you also said, you know, during the MRS remedial investigation that you didn't think there'd be any groundwater impacts. But I'm actually a little bit concerned about perchlorides. And also in, in some of the groundwater investigations on the east side of Kowreski Airport that the Health Department is conducting, there, there seemed to be some emerging contaminants at a very deep level, which would imply that the source was relatively far away. And, and my, limited, but my understanding of groundwater flow direction is from this, you know, this area moving eastwardly, east, east and south. And so I would hope that you guys do a little, I, you know, I don't know that these emergent contaminants that were associated from fire foam, mostly from like 60s, 70s, were, could they have been used in the 40s? I, I don't know. I don't know what the constituents are. You know, and if fires were put out from these explosives during that period that could have caused drinking water impacts. But I, I hope that you guys do pretty, do, you know, focus on maybe a little bit more on groundwater impacts, potentially particularly perchlorides, but also these fire retardants, these firefighting foams.
Right. So as, as part of the investigation, we, you know, we will be digging deeper into, you know, if there are any uses of the site that, that we didn't, we weren't aware of before. I don't think there are. You know, so with the bombing and strafing, it would, we're more looking for the munitions constituents. In the 40s PFAS, which I'm assuming you're talking about with the emerging contaminants, PFAS was not widely used in the 40s for firefighting foam. In fact, the Department of Defense did not, so the Department of Defense has to go through a rigorous process with which to add products to the, what they acquire. And this has been the case throughout the decades. And so PFAS-containing firefighting foam was not something that DOD used. There's no record of DOD use until the 70s. And 1969, 1970 is, is the date on that. So we would not be looking for emerging contaminants at a FUD site based on the date of use. We do, since the FUD site boundary date is 1986, we do look at prior use to see if there is evidence that PFAS could have been used. And firefighting foam is a great example of that. So we do look at that, but in general, based on the time period of use, which is in the 1940s, we would not anticipate PFAS firefighting foam would have been used at this site.
There were some though perchloride detections in the drinking water in that area too. Not in necessarily the area you're talking about, but near the airport. And I'm, is that something that you will be looking for?
So I am not sure if that's on our list or not. Todd, do you, Todd or Jen, do you know?
Pretty much.
In general.
Explosives, so.
Right. There are some munitions that are known to contain perchlorates and the DOD has kept a really great record of like what's in each munition. And the munitions that were used at the site are not known to have ever contained perchlorates. So it's not part of our munitions constituents list because we don't have any historical munitions used at the site that would have contained perchlorates. That would have contained perchlorates.
So, you know, to, to that, uh, to that same question, I, I used to work at the Naval Weapons Lab up at Calverton. And this was an overflight area in the late eighties, early nineties. Um, until they closed, it was up, you know, I have you guys looked at that facility? I, I recall a. Uh, a crash, but I, to be honest with you, I'm not sure exactly where it was, but I know it was in the. In the flight test area, they conducted flight tests for the A six and F fourteen. And I know that they had done, they, they'd had at one accident that. That may have occurred there. I, you know, I've walked this area as best I can. I never saw it, but it's of a crash, but. I don't know if you're dealing with uh, the Naval Weapons Lab or. Uh, you know, now it's a, now it's, it's no longer operation. But some of the historical record might be useful to look at.
What year was that crash?
I'm not sure exactly, you know, this was sort of like scuttlebutt around the water cooler. We, but I, there were, there've been. An, a, an accident that had been talked about. And I'm trying to recall the, the year, but I, you know, I'd have to go back and look.
In general, the remedial investigation process is very comprehensive. Um, you know, and so we've also mapped. You know, other historical properties that have contamination. And so those are, those are things we will consider as we. You know, we're gonna gather our data and we will look at our data in the context of the existing environment. And there, there may be cases where there are questions about, you know, boundaries of, of other sites. Um, you know, and so those are, those are questions that we will look into once we have um, our data collected.
I was gonna make, I, 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 I hope that it made its way to you that we had hired a company toxic targeting. To do a survey of Southampton entirely.
Yep.
Yeah, okay, so you guys, I, I hope that, that, that connection was made. Cause that might be helpful as well. It's a pretty comprehensive uh, spill site inventory.
Right, so we, we use the environmental data resources, which is a. Like a database clearinghouse to understand what other, you know, non-DOD sites, although DOD sites are also on there. Um, might be area. And I think John Uvia, you mentioned that you had a report that you might be able to share with us from that standpoint. So. To look at anything you wanna send.
Yeah, I thought it, it had gotten to you. So if it hasn't, um, let me follow up. Yeah, okay.
Okay. Great, that would be awesome.
Uh, this is Councilwoman Lobstad. Um, I, if, if you come across a structure on private property that falls within one of your transect lines, do you go? Inside?
We do not, we do not need access to the interior of anybody's house or any, any structures. This will be. This, the fieldwork will be conducted outdoors.
Okay, thanks.
Do you have a, a list of the, the constituents you guys are testing for?
Yeah, we do. We're, um, so right now, we are working on um, wrapping up. Our sampling plan. It's called a QUAP. Um, so it has our data quality objectives. It has. Um, the current conceptual site model. It talks about what, you know, the historical data we're looking at and. Um, and then yes, it also talks about the chemical analyses that we're gonna do and what laboratory we're gonna use and what. What detection limits we're looking at. Um, so that. Report is, is still in process. Um, but we, we do have a list of, of the analyses we plan to um, conduct.
And, you know, since this was. Eighty years ago, or maybe a little bit less. You know, if some of those constituents do pose of. Human health risks and are known to. Travel in uh, groundwater, you know, cause some things do get sort of stay up at that soil level, but some get. Get carried by precipitation into the drinking water table. Will you do those groundwater studies for those contaminants and will they go beyond? The boundaries, particularly if you see any detections a- at the surface level. Will you, will you kind of go outside your boundary to look to see if there's more? Um, that has, that is, cause, cause what was. Well, what may have occurred sixty years ago may be fairly far away at this point.
Right, yeah, so with our investigations, we will look at what we're detecting and if, and. We will also look at the human health and ecological risk assessment. Um, and if there's an indication that we need to step out our boundary, um, we will do so.
Okay. I, I'd like to get, uh. See a list of the things you are looking for.
We could share that. Okay. Nope, we are getting short on time. This went a lot quicker when I.
Any, any other, any other questions for Julie or the team?
Can you continue or include a historical analysis on, I don't know what units use this area for, for bombing? And practice?
So I think we have that. Todd, do you wanna, you take that question? We have a. I think we know who was, do we have, do we know which military units were conducting practice out here?
Sorry, I was on mute, forgot. Yeah, the, uh, I, I, I don't know offhand, but you know, we did do an archive search report out here. And a, a site inspection where they did go back and look at historical records. So, um, we can, we can get that information.
Okay, so some of our local historians may be, some of our local historians may be able to connect. Who practiced out here and where they served in different theaters of the war, of World War Two?
Yes.
Okay, and that's an aside. I know that's uh, not exactly what you're doing, but it's uh. It could be germane to our history and.
Well, you'll need authorization to enter onto the town properties to conduct this investigation, right? So. At some point, the town attorney will bring. Me a resolution to introduce that would authorize me to enter into an agreement. With the Corps of Engi, Army Corps of Engineers to access these properties for this site investigation. So that's probably the next thing the town board will see regarding. So, uh, and I, I guess those properties will be listed in the resolution by tax map.
Correct, yeah, the supporting, if, there will be, you know, a, a form of legalese. You know, that talks about the access agreement. It's a, it's a standard form. You know, that will have, it, it's actually fairly short, but it's a standard form. And then attached that it will, it will have a map of. Um, the parcels, including the tax IDs.
Okay.
All, or most of these lands are wide open lands, indistinguishable really from ownership, right? Just woodlands.
Yep. Right. Yeah, we, yeah, we are aware of potential future challenges, making sure we're on the correct parcel. In, in the Pine Barrens, we.
Either us or it's the county, or sometimes the state.
Yeah, the state, the state has.
Yeah, the state ones a little.
Has a large amount of the, at least the easements, right, Julie? Probably.
It's all three. You've got county, uh, Southampton and state properties on here.
Yeah, on, on, on the, if you recall, under the Pine Barrens Act, it was really the state's obligation primarily to acquire. Anything that was in the core area.
Yeah, mostly the MRS is the core area.
Yeah.
There's a little compatible growth, but most of it's core.
Yeah.
Right. Okay, um, so we're gonna need to move on too, but thank you for presenting. And, uh, in the board, we'll. We'll watch out for that resolution.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank you guys. I've been on a couple of calls with you and, you know, your, your very thorough approach to this and. And Dave Wilcox in particular, who's been. Uh, just doing a phenomenal job to help, help sort all this out and get this done. So thank you. Uh, Dave, and uh, thank you Julie for everything you guys are doing.
Thank you as well. We really appreciate the support and, you know, Dave, Dave and Rossa, Ross and Paula, as well as you, John, have been. Very helpful. So we, we appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you.
Interesting, very interesting presentation.
All right, so you guys will be able to exit and we'll keep going down the word. Um. So I guess the next thing on the agenda is updates. So, um, I guess I'll start. We already had Ryan on, so he's sort of updated us on COVID matters. Um, so today was, uh, early this morning, I believe, was the launch of, uh. Sun TV, which is kind of a big deal that we now have, uh, channel twenty is up and running. Yeah, it was up and running before, but it wasn't a local channel. It was like a Long Island based channel and we have the right to, uh. To broadcast on it as for, for community activities. And, uh, we worked out an arrangement with LTV, which is a local TV out in East Hampton. And they've been doing, they've been, they've had access to channel twenty for as long as I can remember. So. At least, uh. Maybe thirty years worth. So that's a, that's a good thing. So we're getting local programming. Some of it's, uh, East Hampton based. But, uh, we are, eh, have the ability now to override their programming with. Um, our own programming as we develop content. And there's a. Um, I think a two hour slot today where we're gonna be doing that later in the day. I wanna say from seven to nine. Um, but I think you'll find the content on channel twenty much more interesting. Than it has, has been and much more relevant to the east end. And, you know, LTV does do a lot of, a lot of shows that are particularly relevant to town of Southampton. Uh, Gene Chaparoff has a show and the hospital has a show and. A lot of things they cover, um, occur in the town of Southampton, be they, uh. You know, Bridge Hampton area or, or other areas. So. Um, you know, as we get more content, we will put more in more um, on channel twenty. So. And the public is invited to develop content. LTV studios are, are there to help. And, uh, that Wayne Scott facility is a really great facility. So if somebody. Uh, wants to take advantage of public access TV. You literally can produce a show on an iPhone, right? iPhone and a laptop computer. And, uh, you can now give us the content and we can put it on. Uh, Connie's been working on this. Julie, I know you've been involved with this. Um, so this is sort of a big moment, um, for us. It's something that has been a goal of mine since I. Got here as town supervisor to, to basically take over channel twenty and make it local. But the schools should use it, the libraries should use it. Anybody with an opinion, left, right, center, whatever it is, you can do your own show. This is, you know. This is your channel. Channel twenty-two is government, channel twenty is public. So if, you know, you wanna go film this, you know, the soccer game, yesterday was big soccer game. Up at, uh, Southampton High School. Film it, put it on, so everybody can see it. Uh, particularly in an era of COVID where maybe, you know, attendance is pretty limited at these games. If you're, you know, if there's a concert, a play. At the school, put it on, get it on, uh. Get, get, get it on channel twenty for everybody to enjoy. So I wanna encourage everybody to do that. And, uh, that is, is sort of a landmark uh, day in the town of Southampton where we now. Have not but, not one channel, but two channels. So, uh, I wanna thank Connie Conway and the whole committee that's been working on. This for a while. Um, they really put in a lot of time. So Julie, do you wanna add anything to that?
Uh, just that this has been, as you said, uh, thought about for many years and, and the committee has been. Talking about it forever. So I'm glad to see that it's finally come to fruition.
Yep, um, you know, Bob Florio, Rob Florio worked on it for a long time. You know, it's a, it, it's a nice thing to see happening. Yeah, so check it out. Go, go on channel twenty. It's, we're broadcasting now. So you, you might see LTV. Most of the time right now. I think from seven to nine, you'll see Sun TV. But, uh, and there is some promo that they're, they're running as well, which is pretty good, inviting the public to participate. And telling them how to do so. All right, um, I mentioned before that we're extending the general emergency order. To, um, to May first. It might have to get extended beyond that. We're gonna continue to do these work sessions via Zoom. But by mid-May, we're gonna try to have the town board meetings back in the, uh, the town board meeting room. Uh, CRC created a website or a dashboard which consolidates all online services that the town provides. Permit applications, beach permits, tax payments, SOS reports, payments of, uh. Uh, Hampton Beach Water District, uh, bills, alarm billing, parking ticket payments. So all that is, uh. Now consolidated on the town website. So you should check that out too. That's making it easier for people to take advantage of doing things online. Um, and I thank CRC for that and IT. Um, I got a request. And we'll have to sort this one out. There was a fire. Um, oh, last weekend out, uh, it was in East Hampton near the airport, a brush fire, I think about fourteen acres, but. Um, to get to it, they needed to go uptown Line Road. Town Line Road, um. Uh, the bulk of Town Line Road is just a dirt road through the woods. You know, it's a lot of woodlands over there. And I didn't even know who it belongs to, whether it belongs to us or the town of East Hampton, but it's not being properly maintained for fire access. So the supervisor called me and said, can we work together, the two towns, to get it regraded, um, and make sure that. You know, the fire, you know, the brush fi, or you know, the firefighting equipment can. Get up into that area to put out a fire, forest fire. And, uh, so I'm bringing it to you guys. I, I told the supervisor, I thought we would be inclined to share the costs since. We share the road and it's, uh, you know, it's for public safety. So, well, you know, we'll have to talk to Len, who's on this call too, about doing that. It's, we're not improving the road. All we're doing is trying to get it. Um, somebody to regrade it. It's possible that our town highway department could do that. Um, the supervisor, Vencekoyek, suggested that maybe East Hampton Town Highway Department could do it. Uh, maybe both departments could do it, or we can hire a private contractor, or they could do it and maybe we could, uh. Reimburse them for, for some, you know, half the time or something like that. So it, it is important that it gets done. So maybe if, uh. I don't know, Len or Jim, if somebody wants to weigh in on how we do this, it's really just the, you know, a dirt. Fire access type of road.
I can, I'd like to weigh.
How much is it, Jack?
Okay.
Peter is gonna give me a, uh, an estimate to regrade it by a private contractor. So I, I don't, I don't have a number. It's not gonna be a lot.
It's, it's, there's a lot of maraines back eh, on that road and, uh, some of the areas are washed out. Uh, trucks can't get through. And I, I, I know it's, uh, it's impassable in places. It's, uh, you know, it's a good hiking trail, but, uh, it's, it, in places, it's, it's quite steep and, you know, the, the washout is. Is, uh, significant and it's gonna probably take some degree of upkeep.
Yeah, ideally you would have your highway superintendent, uh, send a crew out and do some work on it and, um. We have the appropriations within the budget.
So, um, Rick, do you wanna reach out to Alex?
Yeah, absolutely.
And see if he could work with Steve Lynch, who's the highway superintendent of East Hampton and. Maybe they can do it together, then, then it can be done simply within the highway departments.
Absolutely.
Okay, um, and, and if you have any questions, just let me know. So that, that would be helpful, cause I do need to get back to, uh. So that, that would be helpful because I do need to get back to, to the East Hampton supervisor. If I have any other updates here. I, I think for today, that's, that's it. What about you guys? Anything you want to bring us up to speed on?
I will piggyback on your Sun TV introduction because I had a Zoom meeting with the youth bureau from Southampton Town. We spoke about the Great East End cleanup and then I took a half hour of other questions from the panel that they had. And I believe Connie has told me that that will be the seven o'clock show tonight. It's going to be an edited version by the youth bureau themselves. I haven't seen it yet. So I'll be tuning in at seven. Let's see what happens with that. But it is a good segue because the Great East End cleanup that we've been plugging, you know, every week is May 15th and 16th and the youth bureau has picked two locations and they've been, they've been very helpful in, in identifying some other groups for me to get in contact with. So it was really nice to see the kids that night. So hopefully it goes well.
Wow. So you're, you're headlining. You're the debut artist. That's great.
I don't know. I might get the hook at the last minute. You never know, programming.
Good. I'm glad you're taking advantage of it.
Well, you know what, Rick, speaking of hooks, because the same idea we're, we have the, the connoisseur partnership has produced a really neat half hour video about what they do and what their plans to restore the connoisseur and all of that. So it's a really great video. It's pretty informative. So I think they're trying to get that on too. So we might, we might be competing for the same slot.
There you go.
And they've done a great job. As you guys know, we're in the middle of a transition to Stony Brook University with the connoisseur partnership program. So this is kind of a kickoff. They have a 10 year management plan that we just completed. So it, there's a lot of excitement within the group. I just had a great call with the regional manager of the EPA for our management committee and everyone's really excited. There, there'll be a whole series of events that I'll, I'll, hopefully you guys can join over the next month or so to sort of solidify that, but also to highlight some of the accomplishments and the plans going forward for the connoisseur program. So so we might, we might be, you, you might be seven and we might be eight, you know, one of those guys.
I tell you, it's going to be a great tool. The presentation for the Bridge Hampton Historical District was wonderful. I think something like that should go on. It was so informative. I mean, I mean, there's so much history here and you know, we need to take advantage of that.
I turned on, just to see that it was actually on, I turned it on right before our meeting. And they were, it was an LTV program, but it was introduced with local veterans, veteran stories. It's great. You know, I, local, whether you're from Southampton or from East Hampton, you're a local vet, you know, and it was kind of nice. You know, it's, it's, you know, part of our extended community there. So, and, and I think that maybe they'll start to expand some of the work that they do at LTV to include more of Southampton.
The studio is literally a quarter mile from the border.
Yep.
I, I also wanted to thank the board. We recently, and thank you, Jay, for all the efforts going into the West Hampton Community Center. So we, you know, you guys know, you passed the RFP, that's the first big start to get that community center up and running. So there's a tremendous amount of excitement in, in the West Hampton area. So I just wanted to, there was a lot of appreciation. I just wanted to share that with the board. I, I was supposed to go shake each and every one of your hands, but obviously COVID is presenting for doing that. So they'll do it later.
We'll shake. All right. Any, any other updates?
Sure. I met with the NOAC Civic Association and they're a very active group in the NOAC area and we discussed a number of different things. Some of the concerns that, that they had surrounded access to our parks after five o'clock on cars coming and, and folks coming who don't have park stickers and parking in our parks and using the beaches after hours and making it difficult for our residents to access the beaches. And I just wanted to put that on your radar. You know, there was a significant concern about that, particularly in the Foster Memorial Beach, Long Beach area. That, that was one issue. And another issue that, that was brought up was with Trauma Pond. Trauma Pond is a, it's a pond made by an earthen levee that was created to, to, there's a waterfall there to power a mill years ago, and now it's a town park. You know this. It is the victim of invasive species. I think it's, it's called Kabamba, which is really taken over significant portions of this freshwater pond and making it difficult for, for people to swim in the pond. Someone went in early. God bless them. They're, they're out there swimming already and they, they said that this weed is already to the top of the pond now. So I'm going to be reaching out to Marty Shay, our chief environmental analyst on this and to see what we can do about some of these invasive species in our ponds and in our parks. But I wanted to put that on your radar as well. Some other concerns were pedestrian access from Cromer's Pine Neck area, which is a heavily, you know, a very residential area and Long Beach itself, you know, our issue of traffic, which is a never ending issue. And I think every single one of the areas of the town of Southampton, but it makes it very difficult for pedestrians to move around the hamlet. So I just wanted to bring those three things to our work session.
I got a couple of things.
Okay.
So I had the East Cog CAC last night and we spoke about some code issues and some parking issues that I continue to follow up on trying to get those remedied. They also spoke of their, they would like to help improve Bay Avenue Park. There's already some improvements going on and I know that Kristen is willing to speak with them about future things that they may, they may want to do, but they would love to have a waterfront park that their community could, you know, just walk from town. So it was a pretty good conversation. Tuesday night I met with the North Sea CAC. We had a presentation about the proposal for solar at the North Sea Transfer Station. It was very interesting. We also had a presentation about the Tupper Boathouse and there was a really cool pic, recent picture of the build out on the inside, which was pretty neat. And the CAC also wanted, just to bring to your attention that they had written a letter concerning the Staheki proposal condos and they wanted me just to remind you that they have sent a letter and that they, the CAC is opposed to that project.
I hope that letter was sent to the ZBA.
Yeah.
I, I think they copied it, us on it as well.
Right.
Yeah. Right. Cause that's one of the ones that remain with the ZBA.
Yes.
Anything else, Julie?
That's it.
Jim, do, do we want to update them at all on the meeting with the Greenfield Road, Greenfield Neighborhood group that we met with yesterday?
Just that, you know, we are still looking at different options.
With their issues, right? There's like a hundred plus homes back there. They only have, they're only able to exit their community out to County Road 39. And you know, ever since the road was widened, it's, and the traffic has built up. It was really very, very difficult for them to head west, you know, they would have to sort of go east and find a way to turn around and you know, now they're concerned even heading east that the traffic is so much because there's no traffic lights to the west of that point. So the traffic doesn't get interrupted. It doesn't get punctuated by a light. So they're, they're finding it really challenging and they're really hoping that we as a board will address what they believe is a public safety issue without burdening the residents of the community. And so the, the chief was on, police chief was on the, on the Zoom call and he certainly understood their issue from a public safety perspective. And you know, and Jim is looking to whether this sort of situation can be viewed sort of differently than, you know, a private subdivision road where, you know, the residents are made to improve the road. They already have their roads. They're, they're fine. They just feel trapped in their community and are looking for an outlet. And you know, the chief has said that it would be really good to also have a road that would allow the rerouting of traffic when County Road 39 has to be closed because that has significant impacts on our local economy, not just in Southampton, East Hampton as well. When, when the eastbound traffic gets closed down for four hours because, because of a traffic accident, they have very little ways to reroute and this would make a, could make a very big difference. So Jim is exploring whether something like this, you know, a one-way, sort of a one-way street. And Chris Fenton was on the call too, whether this could be done as a townwide project, basically to create this, you know, for public safety purposes and you know, if we can do it, I think I, you know, I like the board then to consider whether it wants to then move forward with doing something fairly expeditiously so that we can get this connector road built. But Jim, go ahead. You can-
And I think the, the one positive thing that we may have is that the road, the area that we're looking to possibly improve on, on our own, Shinacock Hills, part of Shinacock Hills Extension, they call it. I believe is a, is a map street from, from, from that subdivision there. So if it is, I'm just confirming it. Kelly Doyle from my office is coordinating with Dave Wilcox to coordinate whether it's a street that has continuing offer of dedication. The paper street is what typically is referred to. So at least at that point, we would, we would have the ability to take ownership of the property and then we may have a little more flexibility to, to do something on our own if we do on the road. We're also considering what supervisor said as far as just doing this on some type of emergency basis. As you may be familiar, the only other physical access that this community has out of their, out of their area is St. Andrews Road West, which is actually a private road. And it, and it hooks up with 39 just about at the golf course, a little bit, a little bit west of the golf course. So, so the idea from the chief's point of view of 39, there's an accident that shuts down 39 west of that point where St. Andrews Road comes in. You could detour the people along St. Andrews Road West, hook up with this Shinacock Hills extension, which we would approve and would bring people out to Hill Station and then they can, they can go from there. So we're looking at that. We've reached out to the Association of Towns, which provides a lot of guidance to municipalities. Kelly's been going back and forth with their attorney. We've reached also out to the Cornell University Roads Program that provides a tremendous amount of advice and guidance to all highway superintendents and highway issues throughout the state. So looking to see that if we have a way to do this, that sets us a little bit of a square peg into a round hole, but we're looking to see if we can do it and take the- trying to get this done if we can.
The property owners, a lot of them are families, you know, but they are imploring us, you know, to do something that they, they didn't create this problem.
Yeah. The other issue, I did speak with the highway superintendent, our highway superintendent a couple of days ago and he was actually meeting with the county DPW. I don't think it's something that's, he wasn't really expecting that he would get a positive answer, but he was, they were talking about, you know, a traffic light at Greenfield, which would, would resolve the situation for these people as well. But he was not real optimistic. He did reach out to Gil Anderson, who was the former commissioner, who's now, you know, works with us as consultant over at McLean. And then Alex was meeting with Joe Brown, who was the former state regional director. I knew him over at DOT and he's now one of the deputy commissioners in DPW. So I will follow up with Alex and see what, you know, came of that discussion.
We have so many properties that take access to County Road 39. It sort of goes against trying to keep County Road 39 flowing. You know, that's, and then that's the reason why DPW at the county typically don't, they don't want another light.
Right.
That stops all the traffic. They're trying to get the, the traffic to move through. But every time a car pulls out from this neighborhood, even to head, go east, you know, traffic has to stop. Somebody has to stop to let them out.
Yeah.
There's just so much traffic. So if they could get out of their neighborhood onto Hill Station Road, not onto County Road 39, you know, they could head to the village by making a left. You know, going down that way, or they can go up, they could go through, I guess, Longview or-
Long, yeah, Long Meadow, I believe is. Runs parallel with Sunrise Highway. Allows them to go west up to Peconic and then over and, you know.
Yeah, there's a road that parallels.
Yeah, I think it's Long Meadow.
Something like that. So.
Yeah. Yeah, it's a good road. It's, that's the way out for them. It's-
That's the way out. Yeah. What?
Longview Road.
Longview, Longview.
So anyway, so I wanted to keep you up to, up to date on that. If Jim determines that we can legally spend taxpayer money on doing that, you know, Chris, Christine will work up a price, Chris Fenton will work up a, an estimate. And you know, we would have to do a bond, obviously to pay for it. And you know, that, that's really subject to, you know, four of us would have to agree to do this. But first, we're not there yet because Jim hasn't yet determined that it rises to a townwide project as a, you know, public safety project that can be funded townwide. So if Jim makes that determination, that'll be the next step is to see, taking the temperature of the board to see if you guys are willing to step up to try to fix this issue. So.
The other thing that we've been pursuing and it's, maybe it's a bigger picture, maybe a little bit further down the road. It's not as quite as immediate as this particular situation is that some of you may be aware that Fred Thiel and Ken Levell back in 2013, that special state legislation passed to allow town, we believe to expend town funds to improve substandard roads throughout the town. And that's something we're also looking at. And we're hopeful to meet with Fred just to see as far as the legislative intent, exactly what we can and cannot do. We're hoping to meet with him soon. And then we've been meeting with Christine Fenton and and others to kind of give a priority of what roads we would look at. As we all know, there's quite a few roads throughout the town that could be addressed.
No, I would think it is a public safety issue. You know, unfortunately we have lots of accidents on 39 and everything comes to a standstill and it absolutely affects ambulances coming from west or east, depending on where the accident is.
No question, Councilwoman, that it's a public safety issue. It's just whether the, we just have to nail down whether the town has the authority to, once we, once a road is improved and it's set it into the system, it's unquestioned that the town has the ability to improve it, to widen it, to do whatever we need to do to, you know, properly have safe roads throughout the town. It's, the question is, can the town improve an unimproved road to take it into the inventory beforehand? Typically, the towns do not do that. And we're looking for, trying to find that authority to, to spend town funds to bring a road from, from, you know, virgin land basically to, to, to a level where it could be taken into the system or at least to be able to be used for emergency bases like this. We, we, we've been looking at, we've been looking at it for a little bit. We've been looking at all the opinions, case law, Kelly's been working very hard on it as well. Christine Scolari and Cara has been involved in the past as well. We'll, we'll get there.
The community, so that, so the upside of this is that the community would have an outlet, another outlet from, from, from their homes rather than County Road 39. But I suppose the downside is that in an emergency situation, County Road 39 could be diverted through their neighborhood and they're aware of this and they're-
They're aware of that and they're okay with that. They'll do their part clearly. Now, this is a one-way street, so it would be only an outlet from their neighborhood, not an inlet. However, for emergency purposes, the police and fire and ambulance can certainly go down the one-way street in the other direction. We'll try to design it with enough road width so that if a vehicle were going in, in the correct direction and emergency vehicle were going opposite to that, they could pass each other. So you know, that's something that will be taken into consideration. But if this were one-way, if this were a two-way road, it would likely become one, just another bypass. You know, a lot of people avoid County Road 39.
Everybody at Hill Station would be looking for a way to cut through, you know. Everybody at Hill Station would be looking for a way to cut through, you know.
So we're gonna, we want to make it a, do not enter. Just, just exit. And it's also, you know, there's some challenges with the railroad trestle nearby too. So. It, as you come out, it might be right only. It's possible. We have to look at that issue.
And long term, as you know, if the hospital gets placed where we, where it's planning over on Tocohole Road. There has to be other road improvements in the area, so.
May help too, because then maybe they could make, or they're saying that even making the right has become challenging, but. There may be, there may end up being something out by the hospital where you can off ramp. And go over or go under.
Type of cloverleaf, something has to, I mean, you can't place, can imagine, can't place the hospital in that location when out, some type of bypasses.
So we're no longer looking at Hillside Road, the former private road?
No, no, we're not looking at that.
Which was the original.
Yes, that, to improve the unapproved area. To Hill Station there. Councilman is certainly the, probably at least less expensive, but. Where Hillside meets Hill Station is just very south, just shortly south of thirty-nine and. Everybody thought that would be a very dangerous intersection, have people coming out at that spot. You know, you get people coming. Onto Hill Station or heading south on Hill Station, coming over thirty-nine or queuing up. To make a ride onto Hill Station or try to make any kind of turn from Hill Station. And the entrance there, the intersection area is right there. It's, we felt that was very unsafe. And there was a lot of objection, quite frankly, from the people who live on Hillside. They're not in support of that at all, so.
Well, I I'd be, I'm interested to see what the numbers come out because it is undulating terrain in there.
It is very, you're very correct, yes.
For the end.
Has has pointed out that there's quite a bit of, yeah. Quite a bit of topography in the area, head a hole and whatnot.
Anyway, so we'll keep you, we'll keep you posted. All right, any other updates? All right, seeing none. I, let me see what we have on for exec. Personnel litigation contracts. That's what I have on for exec and there's a separate. Call in number. We're going to do that by telephone. So at this point, I'll make a motion to end our work session and go into executive session. On personnel litigation and contracts.
Second.
Seconded by.